Can, Commissioner, thank you.
Okay, we have, we've got Paul Jones here. Ralph Barnes, are you here? Can you hear us?
Yes, yes, I can hear you, thank you.
Richard Nielsen?
Yes, I can hear you as well.
Okay, then with that, let's begin. We welcome everyone to the Commission meeting today. And we have a couple items what we'll go through first is we'll have an opening, a reading, prayer, or thought by a volunteer out of this group. After which, we've asked a volunteer to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have anyone that could lead us in that prayer pledge? And anyone that could offer a prayer, reading, or thought? Yes, sir, thank you. Yes, sir.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful to Thee for the opportunity we have to be here today and participate in the processes of government. We are grateful for the freedoms that we enjoy that allow this. And we pray that we will all be able to think clearly and calmly as we discuss the needs and issues that are before us today. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, and welcome. What we will do is we have a recognition. We'll, we'll take care of that item first, followed by a work session. And then after we complete those two items, we will then go through our regular agenda and consider which ones should go on consent and move forward from that point. So with that, Gaila Quitner. Where is she? Oh, there she is, way back there. I thought she was with everyone else over here in the middle. Gaila and her son Preston from the Orient, after about three years there with the Air Force still, Staff Sergeant. Thank you very much, Preston, for serving. But Sergeant Robert Widlin wrote this up. He says, "I would like to take this opportunity to request that Gaila Quitner be considered for Employee of the Month." Gaila Quitner is currently assigned to the Utah County Alternative Program as a Senior Office Specialist. Gaila is responsible for the clerical operations for the program. And this is a responsibility that she has taken very seriously and become very proficient at it. During the COVID-19 epidemic, the numbers in the program, of the program participants, reduced significantly due to the closure of the courts. This presented Gaila with time that she used to assist with revamping the program. This consisted of rewriting, updating all forms, procedures, as well as receiving training to ensure that the program is consistent with best practices. The program is now back to operating numbers. However, it operates far more efficiently and is more, far more professional. And Gaila's skill, professionalism, and hard work was critical in making this process happen. The pandemic also presented an opportunity for Gaila to use her knowledge and skills to assist with the federal CARES grant. Gaila worked tirelessly to assist with the grant and quickly became a critical part of the grant management team. And Gaila has shown her versatility and dedication to both the alternate program and the grant management team. She puts forth high-quality work and does it with great attitude. And for that, I nominate her as Employee of the Month. Gaila. You get to come up here and say why you are so deserving. Oh, yeah, I bet.
Typically, the people that are Employee of the Month are really excited to come and speak to us. It happens every month.
You could even speak ill-will of other members of your department if you like.
Oh, never, never. No, it was, it was great working with Sheriff's Office, working with the Ucap team. And they're an amazing group, a lot of hard workers. And it's, it was, you know, it's fascinating seeing all the people that go through the program and how successful some of them are, turning their lives around. And it's, it was an amazing experience. So, yeah, it's, sorry, I don't, I don't know what else to say.
You're amazing, and you flew your son all the way from the Orient just for this last night.
Well, he surprised us. We weren't expecting him for about three more weeks, so.
I'm exaggerating, but yes, he just came in here.
It's, it's awesome. So we'll get to see him for about 30 days. And, yeah, thank you.
Okay. With that, we will now go into the work session. And we invite Mr. Phil Dean to come up. And when he finishes, he will have to leave directly to go back to Salt Lake to continue a, a class.
Yes.
And his presentation has to do with the, he's with the Ken Gardner Policy Institute, and he's going to present something about the economic insights and during impacts of pandemic responses, plural.
Yeah. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. I will say, having lived and worked in Utah County, it's a little interesting seeing that block U sitting up there on the screen down here. But I really appreciate the opportunity to share a little bit. I want to give you a 30-second version of what the Kensey Gardner Policy Institute does, is we try to provide good data for decision-makers. So we don't engage in advocacy on any policy issue, but we try to be a public policy data shop. As I talk about my presentation, I talk about the Utah economy, talk about the US economy. And basically, I have five things I want to touch on. You'll see come throughout the presentation. And I do want to highlight, hopefully, a couple takeaways for you as policymakers to kind of think about a little bit. First is that supply broadly in the economy is constrained on both materials and labor. At the same time, demand is very strong in the economy broadly. We'll talk about it in a number of areas, including housing, but certainly that's not the only place. This has caused inflation. Inflation is leading to interest rate increases. These labor shortages, again, are a big deal. They're the current biggest constraint to the Utah economy is not being able to get enough workers in the door, that we could be growing more than we currently are, which in some ways is a little bit scary, given how strong things are right now. All that said, with some national challenges that we'll talk about, our economic fundamentals, particularly here in Utah, are very strong. My high-level summary of the economic data that I'll try not to get too bogged down in is that there's a lot of economic resorting taking place. As you look at some of the after-pandemic effects, you look at reshoring efforts, onshoring efforts, nearshoring efforts, you look at remote work. There's just a lot in flux right now in the economy. You look at baby boomers retiring. So both demographic and other types of economic changes, they're quickly changing the world around us, I think in many ways permanently. Sometimes people think some of this is just closely related to the pandemic. Certainly, that's part of it, but it's much broader than that. And bottom line, policy matters, the actions that we take matter. And I think it's important to remember the people as we work through that. So, as I'm sure you well know, Utah County, one of the fastest-growing counties in the nation, not just in the state. And you look regionally at what's going on here in the Intermountain West, this is where very significant growth, that's represented by the green, showing every county in the US. Also, especially in the South, you look at Tennessee, Florida, Texas, some of those places, that's where you're seeing very strong growth take place in the US. And this continues a trend that showed up in the Decennial Census in 2020, where you saw, again, Utah led the nation in terms of population growth rate. You look within Utah, that's not necessarily all the same throughout Utah as we know. You look along the Wasatch Front, very strong growth. And again, here in Utah County, very, very strong growth. And Washington County in particular, but that whole southwest corner of the state, seeing population increases. At the same time, that the rural parts of our state have either fairly flat or even declining population. One of the benefits that we have here in Utah is we have a diverse economy. This is a measure that we use to compare how well, or how much, an economy as measured by GDP mirrors the US economy. The assumption here being that the US economy is a broad, highly diversified economy. Depending on the year, Utah's always, in recent years, top one, two, or three most diverse economies, meaning we most mirror the US economy. Contrast that with some of our neighbors, like Wyoming, heavily dependent on natural resource extraction. Or you look at Nevada, that's very heavily dependent on gaming and travel and tourism. And if one sector goes bad, the whole economy's gone bad. That's not necessarily the case, and it's very beneficial. This is like really painful for me, I have to be honest about this. But I'm going to go back and revisit pandemic a little bit. And some of the economic disruption that occurred. This graph shows initial unemployment insurance claims. So this is a weekly economic indicator. It's, in my mind, the single best economic indicator that's real-time, because it's released weekly. This shows during the pandemic, so early March 2020, for, I guess, mid-March 2020 for the US. In a single week, we had 6 million people laid off. Cumulatively, it ended up at about 23 million. And that, that far exceeded anything we'd, we'd seen throughout essentially the history of the unemployment insurance claim. I'm going to talk a little bit about the federal government response, and then talk about, a little bit about the state government response. Federal government enacted unprecedented, and I know that's an overused term, but I think it's really accurate, fiscal support. You look at that Wave One, that was bills that passed in March and April of 2020, the biggest one being the CARES Act. That included the PPP loans, that included unemployment insurance enhancements, and included stimulus checks that went out to households. In my mind, that piece of the stimulus was highly essential, given where we're at economically. We kind of were heading direction of a Great Depression. That pulled us back from the brink of that critically. Then, again, those all together, all those bills, about $2.4 trillion. You look at that Wave Two, toward the end of the Trump administration, nearly an additional trillion dollars, and the ARPA bill that passed, another $2 trillion. So with all of that, especially with those last two bills, the economy had recovered fairly significantly. You compare that to the level of GDP, is kind of mind-boggling to think of the size and scope of this fiscal stimulus. The three waves together, roughly 25% of US GDP is what went out into the economy. In terms of the, the Utah response, I just want to touch briefly, there's a study that's come out, I think over the last month or so, from National Bureau of Economic Research, looking at state responses to the pandemic, looking comprehensively at economic outcomes, health outcomes, education outcomes. And they found that Utah, by far, had the single greatest response. Now, that, that is fantastic news. Certainly, I'm personally, there are things I personally would have done different. But the upshot of this is our, our economy emerged stronger with Idaho than any other state economy coming out of the pandemic. We had a very early economic recovery. By the end of 2020, we were below a 5% unemployment rate, which in a lot of circles is considered full employment. So it's created benefits, but also some, some challenges with inflation. I find this graph fascinating, just looking at total US personal income. And you can very clearly see the three different waves of fiscal stimulus that went out into the economy. So during this recession, unlike other recessions, incomes did not decline. Incomes increased during the recession, again, in large part due to that federal fiscal stimulus. At the state level, income taxes are a good fiscal measure for the state, but also a really good economic measure. And this shows what's, what happened with state income tax revenues, both individual income tax and corporate income tax. And what I always pay close attention to is the withholding, because that's a much more real-time indicator of what's going on today. And income tax withholding for the state remains strong through the, the most recent data. There's a potential takeaway for, for you as policymakers. Incomes are robust. And here in Utah County, I don't have specific data here, but I'm sure that's the case here, given everything that you see going on throughout the state. One thing to remember, the state has some constitutional restrictions on the use of income tax. That creates challenges for the state. You may think it doesn't impact you, but it does impact you. There's spending that, in my discussions with both legislative and executive branch officials, the state, there are some things maybe they want to do, but they didn't have the capacity, because where the money was, it was in that income tax, not in the more flexible sales tax. And then the other thing that, that I always highlight, and I'm sure you're doing this, but you got all of that ARPA money. It's part of what's driving inflation in the economy. So just make sure you're spending that wisely and not overcommitting ongoing resources to that one-time revenue source.
To inject, that's something that's driving our focus on how we use the ARPA for long-term multi-generational response and returns. So I appreciate that you're reinforcing that.
Yeah, it's, and I'm not sure that's universally true across the country, which, which worries me some. So what do people do with the money? They got all this money from the federal government. They saved it, they paid down debt, and they spent it. And we're going to kind of talk about those. So you look at personal saving. Again, a lot of these graphs, you have to rescale compared to how things were. People saved very large amounts of that fiscal stimulus. What did they do? They deposited it in the banks, and they're kind of sitting on it. Some new economic data will come out tomorrow. So I wish I had the first quarter of 2022. This only goes through the end of 2021. I expect some of these balances just sitting in people's accounts will be spent down because of the higher inflation. But, but there's a lot of money, bottom line, sitting out there still on household balance sheets. Other good news coming out of the pandemic. Debt service payments for households are the lowest they've been in many generations. So part of this is paying down debt. Part of this is refinancing debt. You know, if you own a home, you refinance from maybe a 4% or 5% interest rate down to a 2.5% or a 3% 30-year interest rate. So savings and monthly budgets, this does create ongoing permanent capacity to spend. And so as you think about sales taxes, another thing, that's something to keep in mind, there is some ongoing capacity to spend. And what have people done? We've, we've spent, right? So you see the big drop there during the pandemic, again, which was worse than the worst of the Great Recession. And then just look at those growth rates. Look at the trend coming out. And, and part of that, especially initially, was like we, we couldn't do these other things that we would normally do in terms of consuming services, because a lot of those were shut down or had limited capacity. And so we started buying goods all over the place, especially for things around the house, recreational things, trying to, again, I think some of it was psychological retail therapy kind of going on there. So you look at the sales tax growth rate. The really high growth rate you see there is compared to one of the lower quarters from the year before. But again, very, very strong sales tax growth rate. I'm assuming you're seeing this showing up in your revenue collections that you have coming in. that you have coming in. But I like the historical comparison, again, just to emphasize, I wouldn't necessarily plan on budgeting based on permanent, permanent things based on an artificial sugar high that's there from the fiscal stimulus. So I've kind of covered some of these takeaways. But in all of this, we're looking at aggregate numbers. I think it's important to realize that there are people being left behind in this. In a lot of different ways, inflation especially, you look at the essential things that we are experiencing high inflation on, that hits the low income households the hardest, because that makes up the largest share of their budget, the kind of non-discretionary purchases. So just, I think it's important to be cognizant of that as, as we figure out as a state, how to move forward. Want to touch on labor markets and what's going on. The bucket's running over. Or another way to think about that is we have record low unemployment, right? In the latest release, 1.9% unemployment. We've never had an unemployment rate in the ones. Every time it drops, we're setting a new record low. And there's kind of a question like, how low can it actually drop? Because I think a lot of people would have said, it can never get this low. Again, this is the single biggest constraint, I think, near term to our economic growth is being able to find enough labor. And similar things nationally that we've seen much lower unemployment, back to either historic lows or near historic lows, depending on the state. Pulled up the other day, how many jobs are on Indeed.com, 85,000 jobs available. And the latest official count of unemployed people is 33,000. So where did all these people go? Some of it's baby boomer retirements. Some of it's just people reprioritizing their lives. You kind of saw the same thing in the aftermath of the Great Recession, even when jobs were coming back, people were like, eh, maybe that extra income, that extra job isn't worth it. I'm an economist, so I like have to include a supply and demand thing. It's just an obligation. Or they like kick me out of the guild or something like that. But why are we seeing labor shortages? The price in that market is too low. So what's the price in labor markets? It's a wage. Wages are too low right now to draw enough people. There are those that will come into the market at a higher wage. And this is one of the challenges. For a long time, we've had kind of cheap, readily available labor. That's not the case anymore. And I don't think it's going to be the case going forward. So you kind of have to think about that broadly, you know, in terms of the economy overall in the county, but also as an employer in the county. And so this is one of those hard balancing act, acts that you have to play as an elected official, kind of balancing, taking care of government and the ability to provide those services, as well as taking care of taxpayers, coming up with that right balance. Just one other thing I'll highlight, your younger employees in particular are much more mobile. They're not, they don't have the golden handcuffs of that tier one retirement system. So I think that's something to keep in mind. Shifting to supply chain, some of this is starting to work out. You're starting to see inventory build up in some firms, but still not back to normal conditions in terms of supply chain. So all of this is channeling into higher inflation that we're all seeing every day. We see it at the pump, we see it at the grocery store. The good news is inflation's even higher here in the Mountain Region than it is for the US. Guess that's not really good news, right? But we're at essentially 10% inflation in the latest reading in the Mountain Region.
We do like to lead.
What's that?
We do like to lead.
We do like to lead. I'm not sure I'm as excited about leading there as I am in other places. But again, gas prices. So the upshot of all this, real wages have declined. And this is a lot of the grumpiness that you're starting to see out there. We'll show consumer sentiment index in a minute, kind of highlighting that. But this is one of the largest declines in real wages. And a lot of times nominal wages have increased, maybe 4%, 5%, 6%. But prices overall in the economy have increased that much more than that. And again, I'm sure you know this, you hear it from your constituents, they're frustrated about inflation. And it's one of the challenges that we have to deal with. So what's going on right now? Federal Reserve is too late, in my view, increasing interest rates to offset inflation. You look at the last time we had very significant inflation in the US economy, like how do you get inflation under control? You increase interest rates a lot higher than the inflation rate. That's how you do it. And we're very much not in that boat right now. So the Federal Reserve, you know, I think the market's kind of anticipating they'll do essentially a full percentage point increase in between their next two meetings, half percentage point each. Interest rates are going up. Hopefully you bonded, like a year ago or two years ago, if you're bonding, because interest rates are going up. In terms of consumer sentiment, there's something we do at the Gardner Policy Institute. I find this fascinating. So we started it during the pandemic. I say we, I wasn't there at the time. But like, we started during the pandemic. The gray there is showing the University of Michigan Consumer Confidence Index. And like, I just look back to March 2020 and April 2020, when consumer confidence, you remember that feeling, everything's shifting under your feet. And look where we're at now compared to that. People are grumpier in terms of their outlook on the economy than they were then. I'll move quickly past the yield curve inversion, but something to kind of think about this. Sometimes it sends false signals. So just want to kind of finish up talking about housing and what's going on in housing markets. And again, as, as we know, housing prices have increased dramatically. Now, one of the challenges that we have as a state is for some of us, that's really good, right? If you own a home already, if you're in that property, that's a benefit to you, this increased house price. So I, you know, I look at my own personal situation. I owned my home for a long time. My asset value went up, and my monthly payment went down because I refinanced my mortgage. That's not the case out there for people that are renting, people trying to get into a home for a first time. So we kind of have this division in society between those who really benefited from the high home prices and those that are feeling the pain from the high, high home prices. The other thing I want to highlight, we look at that nearly 30% year-over-year home price increase. Remember, roughly 10% of that is just overall inflation in the economy. So the blue there is showing adjusted for inflation, which is still really high. But some of what we're seeing is just general inflation. This is not coming from loose lending. You look at these, the mortgage originations that are taking place, very high quality credit, unlike leading up to the Great Recession. Again, rents are increasing. And I actually think the CPI measurement is understating inflation, because I think it underestimates what rents, how much rents have been going up. So in all of this, again, with increasing interest rates, mortgage rates gone from, you know, three to five, five and a half, more and more people are being priced out of the housing market. It creates challenges, right? Stretches people financially and kind of creates additional pressure for more rental property. And there's obviously political pushback many times to that. You just look demographically, where we're at, looking at our long-term population projections, we need another 250,000 housing units by 2030. That's a lot. And that's on, kind of on top of the shortage that we're already dealing with today. So just to finish on this, housing markets are undersupplied. Demand remains strong, even with higher interest rates, demand remains strong. I'm convinced that high housing costs are the single greatest risk long-term to Utah's economic prosperity. We used to have this really good ratio of wages to housing costs. So our wages were lower, but our housing costs were that much lower. That's not the case anymore. And so it's going to be harder over time to attract people to come here, because the wages aren't high enough. So you can solve that with higher wages in the economy, or you can solve that with moderating home prices. But to do that, you have to very significantly increase the supply of housing. Here's the thing I personally really care about, my kids and grandkids aren't going to be able to live here. And that's kind of a scary thought. Some days, maybe that sounds really good, especially the kids. But, but most days, that's a very real problem that we really need to think about and needs to motivate us, I think, as a state to come up to solutions with that. Last thing I want to finish with, and I don't, I haven't seen any assessor data, so I don't know. But it seems like home prices are increasing faster than commercial property values. If that is the case, under truth and taxation, that's going to be shifting that tax burden more to homeowners, even if the entities, you know, even if none of entities going through truth and taxation, increasing taxes, your homeowners may be paying more and may not be super excited about that. So that's my presentation. We have a lot of challenges and opportunities. I'll just kind of leave that, that with you. And I'm happy to respond to any questions if there's time.
Thank you so much. I do have a few questions. One of the things that you mentioned was the unemployment rate, and I think you said 1.9% for the state. I know ours here in the county is at 1.7%. But I was listening to an economist, now granted, this was a national economist yesterday, and she mentioned that the labor participation rate is only at about 62%. And just as an economist, or in your opinion, I mean, obviously, it's an interesting dynamic. We're growing one of the fastest counties in the country, and the number one issue of all of our businesses is they can't find enough employees. And I'm making, you know, some, some assumptions, looking at A plus B equals C, and I'm thinking that's because the labor participation rate is so low. Do you have any thoughts on that?
So we're definitely at a higher, and I haven't looked in the last couple of months, but like 68, 69%
Okay.
here in Utah. So we have a higher labor force participation rate than the national rate. But one of the things, again, to remember in that, is that's looking at the full adult population. So you had a very large number, and this is especially early, when you saw some of the biggest, biggest drops there is baby boomers decided to retire. And so, like, you may be able to get those people back into the labor force, but a lot of them, you're not. Like, a lot of them, it's like, yeah, I jumped off this bridge, I'm going, I'm going this direction, I'm not doing it. And again, I'll go back to, the wages are what's going to incent people to come back into the labor force that have dropped out. So we're, we're still a little bit below where we were. And again, it's been a couple of months. But I think a lot of that's baby boomer retirements. The other interesting thing, at least at a national level, it's harder to get, especially current data at the state level. But younger people have had a lower labor force participation rate than they have, like college age and younger. So there are fewer high school kids working, fewer, I think it's, I'm trying to remember the age range, it might be 25 and below. But that portion of the population also, and this is pre-pandemic, also had a lower labor force participation rate that has continued than in the aftermath of the pandemic.
Thank you. My next question deals with the, the sales tax revenue and budgets. So we have noticed a sharp increase in sales tax revenue. And the sales tax revenue has, has outpaced every other revenue source that we currently have here in the county. And from the, and one of the, one of the things that is common over the last 18 months, as we look at revenue models, and we have this significant increase in sales tax revenues, and that does absolutely affect our budgets and how we budget. No one, everyone we've talked, they don't know why. They don't know why. But when I was looking at those charts that you did, it looked like that those spikes coincided with the stimulus checks. Or if those stimulus checks were going to bank accounts, they were, over time, supplementing that sales tax increase.
Yeah.
Maybe you could expand on that a little.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's clear that, that a portion of what we're seeing is not permanent. A portion of what we're seeing directly relates to those stimulus checks. I've been working on data and kind of getting there-ish on how much, on Utah specific, like deposits and all that, so we can track that.
Or like a percentage. So what would be helpful for us, is we're looking at our revenue increases, and we're looking at building base budgets. If we had an idea of what percentage of that sales tax increase is temporary, because if we plan that in our base budget, that'll make us go upside down when that goes away. So if we had any idea to know how much of that would be temporary, that would help us know, so that we don't, you know, so that we don't plan on that.
This is the good thing. When I left working for the governor's office, I stopped forecasting stuff like this. But let me give you, let me give you a couple of thoughts on it. Again, one, you need to be thinking about, what do you think is the future trajectory of inflation? Because, I mean, I'm looking at that, you know, 18%, whatever it is, sales tax growth rate, and I'm saying inflation alone is 10%. So if you think we're going to go into deflation and like have prices drop, then I'd be really like worried about that. If you think we're going to continue to see inflation, which, which I do, I think it'll moderate over time. But I don't think we're going to these massive price drops. Like, that part's probably there. And again, just go back to say it a different way, like, a lot of this is nominal increases, but not real increases. And then you look at your population growth, how much has your population grown over the last year on a percentage basis? And you can kind of add that to inflation. So I think that's, I would at least start with that of thinking...
Inflation, 10% plus our population growth, which was 2.84, 2.84, so we could round up to say 3%. So you're thinking of the increase, we can take 13% and kind of attribute that to growth.
So I'm not going to officially advise you to do anything.
No, I know, but I'm just...
But I will say, to the extent you think inflation is going to continue, I think that's, like, I think that's a legitimate way to think about it. It's just what's going on with inflation, what's going on with population growth. And then you can think beyond that, then, what's this additional capacity just beyond inflation and population growth with additional true increases in income? And again, there, I would kind of, it's one of the hard things, right? Even at the state level, a lot of the data we get is kind of lagged. And so you kind of try to piece it together the best that you can. But I'm convinced there have been true, real income increases here in the county. There's a lot of economic activity. So I, I personally would be fairly comfortable with saying more than just inflation and population growth. I think there's real income growth that's also embedded in at least some of that. But that's where I think it starts to get really murky, is how much of that.
Is how much of that, okay. Speaking of that 10% inflation, how do you figure inflation? And you're figuring that on like the Wasatch Front or the Mountain Wests?
Yeah. So that's the mountain, that's the official CPI for the Mountain Region is 9.8%. The month before, I think it was 10.3, 10.4, somewhere in that. So I'm just kind of using this round 10% number for the Mountain Region. It's, maybe I shouldn't say this publicly, but, but I, I think they're probably underestimating, especially housing, cost increases. They do that through estimation of rent. And I think that is probably low. So anyway, I would put, for current inflation at least, I would put 10. Again, my sense is inflation's probably going to moderate some. I think a portion of the inflation truly is transitory, which probably isn't the best word to use for it. But I think a portion of it's closely related to the pandemic. But I think there's another very large portion that's not.
Okay. You know, one of the, one of the interesting things that I don't think I've ever seen in a, in a projection presentation from an economist like this, is that, you know, the comment about keeping your employees, that's something, we've very much been facing that in many areas. And we saw that in the mental health industry, in our local health industry, in our first responders, in our law enforcement, in our IT division, in our assessor's office, and our, I mean, I can go on and on and on. And that what we're finding is it's getting harder to keep employees. But if we don't adjust salaries to keep them, then it's significantly more expensive to find new ones. So we, I think, I'm not used to seeing that in economist presentation, but we've, we've been living that over the last 12 months, for sure.
Yeah. And that, that probably comes from my experience as an economist and a budget director, of seeing those very real impacts at the state of having a hard time in all the areas that you were just talking about, right? And sometimes even more broadly than that, where, you know, I think historically, we've been used to being able to do, you know, a 2%, 3% overall increase, and that kind of covers inflation, plus maybe a little bit more, whatever. But that, that is just not the environment that we're in right now. And it's, I think all governments are feeling it. I also think with governments, there is some, something of a demographic component. So I would recommend you look closely at the demographics of your workforce, and maybe you already have, of like, of which departments tend to have older employees that are coming up on retirement in the next, you know, five years or whatever. Because again, with the changes to the retirement system, that younger workforce is much less tied, right? They're much more mobile, where in the, in the tier one system, people kind of have to stay around to get the full benefit from that.
So the last question I had written down that came up as you went along, was once again, looking at sales tax revenues. And, and I'm wondering what your opinion is on online sales tax revenues? And whether those are sustained, or, or if that was just because of the pandemic, that everybody was at home... that everybody was at home buying off of Amazon. I mean, I think we coined a new term, Amazonesia, where you don't remember what you bought till you open the package.
Yeah.
Anyway, and I've heard it, I've heard it kind of debated both ways, where some people think there was, there was a bubble during the pandemic, and it's not sustainable. Other people think that it is sustainable. I just didn't know what your thoughts on the online sales tax is and how that affects our overall, overall sales tax revenues.
Yeah, I think that's real. Like, I think some of it may shift back to in-store purchases. But that, you know, we had kind of started collecting remote sales, which were always due as a tax since in the 1930s, right? But we started collecting in the couple of years before the pandemic, and then it was the October before the pandemic, when kind of that last big chunk for the marketplace facilitators that came online. So yes, I think, I think we did see a jump up. I think part of that changed habits permanently, and they'll probably stay remote sales because people that maybe weren't comfortable making Amazon purchases got more comfortable because they had to, and that continues. But even if it doesn't happen, like now that the tax treatment's equal, I don't think it impacts you either way.
Okay.
If those actually come back to, to sales, you know, especially being a county rather than a city.
So if I understood correctly, what you're saying is, any increase that we saw through Amazon or, or other online retailers, if it does go down, we'll just see it at box store?
That would be my expectation. And again, like some of that may leak to Salt Lake County, or some of it, you know, may move. But, but I'd be, personally be surprised if there were massive shifts in aggregate. Again, it may move back and forth between in-person and remote, but.
Yeah, legal disclaimer understood. But I appreciate you giving me your opinion.
Phil, when do you have to leave?
So it's, I need to leave, leave by three.
Okay, Commissioner Lee, do you have any questions?
I've got, I've got a couple of questions for you. I appreciate this. Is this, is this a slide presentation that, something that we can have?
Yeah, absolutely. Your staff should have it and can.
Very good. And I think there might be people who will ask for it. You made reference to, you know, our management and the state's management. And I'm going to, you know, just to kind of highlight the county's management when it came to the federal funding that came in. We did an excellent job. And as I look across the country with some of our fellow commissioners and others in managing that for, like you said, a long-term effect, which we are going to have a long-term effect with, with that money managed the way we did for the, you know, the future. Because we were really worried. So I was glad to see you say that and, and put it in there as, as, you know, one of the areas that we deliberately, it wasn't by chance. You know, we were really nervous about it. We were really nervous about what that money was going to do and how it was going to affect us. But we did an excellent job of managing that. You talked about, or you made reference to a sugar high with that stimulus money that comes in. Do you have a sense of where that, where that sugar high is? How, you know, how far? And because sometimes, you know, when you get that sugar high, you have a pretty, you sometimes go a little deeper when you, when you get off of that. So I'm just wondering on an economic basis, where you think that sugar, how, how deep that, or how high that sugar high is? And where, where we might be as we're coming off of that sugar high?
Yeah, I wish I had a clear answer. I'll give you some thoughts. And it's, this is one of the most nebulous things out there for me. Like prior to the pandemic, I usually felt directionally, even if, you know, the exact number I didn't feel comfortable with, at least directionally. I mean, there, I think some strong arguments that look at all these economic headwinds that we're running into, right? So we have labor shortages, supply chain, rising interest rates, which is going to moderate or slow down the economy. And is the Federal Reserve actually going to be able to not overdo it and send us into recession? I think there are a lot of arguments on that. And on the flip side, there are all these other arguments. So if firms lay people off, like their competitors are really happy about that because now they have somebody they can hire, which, so labor shortages kind of could offset that. And then just household balance sheets, like these, again, like when I refinanced my mortgage, and I don't remember, I should have, I talk about it, so I should like go back and look. But I probably saved, you know, a couple hundred bucks a month or something. So that's $200 of permanent spending capacity that I have, that I didn't have before the pandemic. And so, so that part I would consider like sustainable, ongoing capacity, you know, expanded obviously throughout, throughout the economy. So it's, I wish I had a great answer. I'm personally convinced that, that there are significant portions of this that are a sugar high. And I do think it's a couple-year trajectory to get off that sugar high. Like I don't think it happens all at once. And part of the question is this, you know, whatever it is, 2 trillion, 3 trillion in the US economy in excess savings that are just sitting in people's bank accounts, how quickly does that get spent down? If that, if that weren't there, I'd be much more worried than I am right now with people with lower debt service payments and having a lot of cash just sitting there that can tide them through some tough economic times.
Yeah. And, you know, it's kind of interesting because you also mentioned about bonding and so forth. And in the last three years, we went through a process of restructuring or bonding to get into a, in a position to where we're at now, which, so I think we're in a really good position there, especially with the bonding side. I get asked this question all the time, from small business owners especially. And they say, what happened with all the workers? I mean, it's not like, it's not like a population just went down. All of a sudden, what happened with the workers? It's likely just kind of evaporated. Now, I get it, on the top end, you know, there's a lot that went into retirement. Even in our own county, we have a, a high end, you know, of individuals that can retire, and that happens. But how would you respond to a business owner that says that? What happened? It's just, they don't understand it. All of a sudden, it looks like, it looks like, you know, all the people are walking around everywhere and doing stuff, you know, out in the parks and whatever. But it seems like all the workers just disappeared.
Yep. And it's, again, a lot of it, I'm going to attribute to that baby boomer wave. I wish I had a graph here showing it, but you know, you look at these waves as they roll through. So like my parents' generation, the baby boomers, my generation, that's like another wave. So you had like a big bunch of bursts, and then it kind of slowed down. Then, you know, their kids, and then the grandkids, or my, my kids' generation. So part of it is that. It is like you just have this cohort that shifted. And some people have been predicting this for many years, like we're going to have the baby boomers retire, and all of a sudden, labor is going to be scarce. And I remember people like just saying, nah, that's crazy talk, you know, whatever. And I think part of it is, we're living that now. Like it's, labor's scarce. And that's the part that, again, I don't think it's coming back permanently. You can, you, at high enough wages and with flexible, enough flexibility, I think you can draw some of those people back into the labor force on a consulting basis, on a part-time basis. Again, I think at the younger end, that, that's kind of a long-term trend. That's, again, we've seen declining labor force participation rate there among the, again, I'm pretty sure it's 25 and younger. And then that, then that main working age population. There's, especially early on in the pandemic, you had a lot of females leaving the labor force with schools shut down and whatever. And I, again, I think some of it's probably that, that it's still, like, those people are still not being drawn back. Like the wages aren't enough to draw people back in. And this is a hard thing for businesses, you know. I didn't have the slide in this, but I do it sometimes. Corporate profits are all-time record highs, or near all-time record highs. And so it's one of those things, I think over time, just the economy is going to force some of that to be given back to workers. Or maybe they can figure out to automate, how to automate, or, you know, do something else to not have to do that. But, but I think fundamentally, this is one of those resorting things I was mentioning, that I think things fundamentally are different going forward. And not that we're always going to have labor shortages, but I think we're going to have to reorient some things in our economy to get back to that.
So one, one last question for me, and this is a conflict that goes on, and I hear it all around. Tesla's, Tesla's saying everyone comes back to the office. Some are saying, hey, the, the work at home is, is a great way of maximization. How does that play into the economics, or does that play into the economics of what's going on, what we're seeing?
Well, certainly for Utah, I think we're a major beneficiary of that. And I've seen national studies suggesting the same thing, that we're one of those locations. There's a person I know that got hired by a New York investment banking firm. Got a really big raise by doing it, and is like spending Utah prices, right? New York wages, Utah prices. As much of our prices have gone up. They're not, we don't have New York housing prices, right? And it's, you know, I think we're seeing that in the Zoom towns, in the more rural areas of the state. So I think we're a major beneficiary of, of that trend. And you see, I mean, in that population graph I had up before, you see outmigration from New York, outmigration from California, some of these other places that had really high wages. I think, at least in terms of the Utah economy, we're very much a beneficiary of that.
Thank you.
Phil, thank you very much. You've got to go. Maybe I'll follow up with you a couple of other questions. But thank you very much. This is very helpful.
It was very, very helpful and informative. Thank you.
Appreciate the chance to be here. And if you ever want me back, happy to come. It's always good to be here in Utah County.
I'll watch for the caller ID.
All right.
That's great.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you. Especially as budgeting season approaches, we may be calling.
Okay. We now are going to go through the regular agenda list, one by one, or a few at a time, and consider which ones we can move into consent meeting. That we have no further addition, any further questions, and we can approve them as they are currently presented. So with that, we will start with items number one through 10. I'd like to table number eight for close. And Glenn, does number 10 need to be continued? One week, so one week from today. So we'll continue number 10 one week, June 15th. We'll continue 10, and we'll table eight. Are there any others in one through 10?
I don't have any.
I don't.
Okay, then 11 through 20. And I've been told that number 15 needs to be continued two weeks to June 22nd. Any others?
None for me.
None for me.
Okay, then 21
Is Bryce here? I thought I saw Bryce Armstrong walk in. Could we just go over, I'm going to hold, I'm going to hold number 29.
Okay. As a point of reference, 26 is a $1,500 donation to Utah County Fair, and number 27 is a $1,000 donation. Okay, then the last few is 31 to 34.
I did not have any.
Okay. And 35 is, I understand we have a couple of items we have to discuss there. And I think 39. Paul, are there any others?
You say 39?
There is no 39. 36 and 37.
Excuse me. I wrote over it. It's 38, 35 and 38.
35 and 38 were the only two that I was.
Only two. Strike 36, 37 then.
Yeah.
All right. We'll hold those for close, and we've tabled number eight for close. Given what the temperament has been, the close might last about 45 minutes to an hour.
I wonder, I wonder, Mr. Chair, if, if, if you'd go through an explanation of what that means to table it and what that process looks like, so that others who have interest might know.
Table means that we will go ahead and discuss this in close. Once the discussion has been made and held here, then we'll reopen this meeting and have a vote or a further discussion, and then a vote yes or no on any particular item. Okay. All right. Any others that I may have missed on this? Alice, would you review what we have?
You bet. Okay, I have us tabling agenda item number eight.
Okay.
Continuing 10 for one week to June 15th.
Okay.
Continuing item number 15 for two weeks to June 22nd. And then we're holding item number 29. And then as far as closed meetings, we're going to hold as, as stated, number 35, striking 36, 37, and holding as stated, number 38.
Okay.
That's what I had to.
All right. If there is nothing else, then we go to our public comments.
Nope.
Nope. Item number 29.
Oops, excuse me, I'm sorry.
So Bryce, as I understand this, this change in the ordinance, I just want to make sure I understand it correctly, deals with solar farms and parcels. And part of the concern is that you might have parcels that are right next to each other, owned by the same group, same, have the same, maybe landowner. And because of the setback situations that we have in place, the parcels are treated on an individual basis instead of on a collective basis. And so when they do a solar panel array, a lot of times, if they run into the, to the boundary of the parcel, they would have to do the setback. And we want to be able to allow them to cross over, you know, those. Mike, is that so far correct?
Correct.
Okay. So my, my question is, what happens if the parcel is sold? Let's say an individual parcel is, is sold by a, a landowner, and we've got this array of, of solar panels that are now crossing over the boundaries.
Sure. This is Bryce Armstrong, Community Development Staff. That actually, that question came up in our Planning Commission public hearing. And in that scenario, the way the ordinance is written is, in order to qualify for this exception to setbacks, the parcel needs to have a common boundary with another parcel that's part of the project that's been approved for conditional use and gone through a process. So if one has been removed, then it no longer qualifies for that exception. And the adjacent parcel that's left in the project would need to have panels removed back to the setback line.
Okay.
And so there would be some alteration to the existing panels of those that are remaining in the project, if that makes sense.
Yep. Okay. I just, I just wanted to have that, that conversation, to make sure that it was understood that we're doing this, we would be doing this if this is adopted to, you know, to kind of deregulate. It doesn't make any sense to make, you know, parcels the boundary lines when you have multiple parcels in place. And so it's a way of allowing business owners, or in this case, solar farms, to be able to have a continual, you know, business model that works for them instead of just bouncing it around with parcels, parcel lines.
Prevent having these, these gaps in the project. They're all part of the same project, and you're having these gaps defined by parcel lines when they're all part of the, the overall project. And so it seemed to make sense.
All right, thank you. With that, there's no other questions. I'll make a motion. I'll, I'll make a motion that we adopt the, the ordinance to amend Section 4.08 of the Utah County Land Use Ordinance.
A second.
Yeah, I will second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 That passes 3-0. And I believe that's it for regular agenda items. Okay. We can now go to public comments. And as we've said in the past, when the public comments are made, we are on the awkward position that we can't always respond to questions that might come up or something that might be said. So are there any public comments that want to be taken at this point?
On any item?
Yes, please, come to the front, yes.
But we usually don't, well.
Well, is it, are you referring to?
But we usually don't take public comment except for on the item. Is this a general public comment, right?
This is general public comment.
This is general public comment?
Like any item?
If the item, I don't know. I mean, I guess the board can decide what they want to do with that. We've usually just done general public comment. But since some of these items have been passed on consent, maybe they can be allowed to talk about the consent items. We still would, would give an opportunity on the item when it comes back off the table to talk on that. If you have one item in particular.
One item, number eight. Are you coming back to that?
We will be.
Oh, yes.
We table it for close for now. We're going to have a discussion amongst ourselves with the council, and we'll come back to the open. We have that one, plus we have a few others we have to discuss that's not on the agenda.
Yeah, and that will come back up in, in public meeting at the end of the closed session.
Today.
Yes. Thank you.
We'll just have to wait out in the hall as we have that, closed meetings.
It'll be 45 minutes, hour, so.
Hope not.
I hope not. We've been keeping them shorter.
Eldon, are you coming to speak to us?
My name is Eldon Aineves. I think you need to fire Bryce, though, because Bryce is. My name is Eldon Aineves. I think you need to fire Bryce, though, because Bryce is messing up our whole community out there. So I don't know which one of you are involved in the firing and hiring, but I would get him fired. Because.
Bill's over, Bill's over, Public Works and.
Not gonna happen.
Isn't it?
Sorry, Eldon.
But it's, anyway, I really have, and I'm sure you've missed me for the last three or four weeks. You too, all right, Alice?
Were you gone the last couple?
Yeah.
I, I noticed you were gone, Eldon. I missed you.
Okay.
Hopefully you're feeling better.
But I, I hope your, your campaigns are going well. Make sure you put some signs up in front of me. Commissioner Sakovich, your, your campaign's doing all right?
Still in the planning stages.
Okay. One of the things that's, just to bring you up to date, I know you're concerned about that, Amelia, is, is that our, our campaign as incorporation for our community is going really well. We're within days of having, well, we have our survey done already. And, and if, and if you want to contribute $7,000 or $8,000, we're happy to receive that. But that's not what, so, so what's happening, though, is that that doggone Spanish fork is coming in on us, and they're trying to destroy us. And so whatever moral support you can give us, we appreciate it. And I don't know exactly.
Were we going to have a public meeting where we came out and discussed incorporating?
You were supposed to come, and you didn't show up.
It wasn't on my calendar.
Oh, wasn't it? No, I, I think we had, we, we are in the midst of that. We're doing it, and we're doing fine. The only thing, like, we survey a spot, and then all of a sudden, Spanish fork is, they're annexing that very survey that we've done. So any kind of moral support that you can give us, we appreciate it. One of the things that's happening, as you know, seeing all that money thrown at our communities out there, we're kind of the last bastion of rural Utah County. You know, I, I get up in the morning, look out to the, to the south of me, and sometimes in mind where, sometimes not, you know. And, and then, the neighbors say, what in the hell's he? But anyway, you see, nothing but green grass and trees and mountains, and that's disappearing. You know, that really concerns me. You know, yesterday, rode up into the mountains, even though I'm 79, almost dead, you know, I'm still, you know, we need to try to preserve that. And that's what we're trying to do out there. So any kind of support that you can give us, Amelia, if you don't give us support, I'm not voting for you. Okay, so.
Well, you know, I always support the farmers and the ranchers.
Ranchers.
Well, I, I support both.
Okay.
Farmers and ranchers.
Do what you can. Moral support's really welcome, you know. One of these days, I'll, the last day will come when I throw my leg over the horse and I'm done. But I want to continue to try to fight as much as we can to take care of that little bit of country that's still out there. So I'll, I'm here for another 10 minutes if you want to ask questions, or. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eldon.
Thanks, Eldon.
Thanks, Eldon.
Are there any other public comments? And with that, we will go ahead and move into our closed session. Thank you, everyone. I'll make a motion to bringing. Well, I think what we'll do is.
We have to bring it back first.
Yeah, I would say, I'm thinking about having public comment and then bring it back, but maybe, let's just go ahead and bring, let's go ahead and bring it back.
Yeah. So, do you want to?
I'll make, I'll make the motion that we bring Agenda Item Eight back onto our regular agenda.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 It's brought back on public agenda. What I thought I'd do with this one is have any public comment first on this topic. And it's, it's just on this particular topic, though.
On Item Eight?
Item Eight, yes.
Yes, sir. Carol Ferguson, Springfield, Utah. I want to thank Commissioner Sakovich for submitting Item Eight for the Board's vote to investigate the potential unauthorized release of documents. Thank you for being forthright and not compromising on the goal of an unfettered investigation, focusing on truth and freeing Utah County and the hearts and minds of the citizens of the county from the corrosive impact of any potential falsehood. Thank you for not compromising on the importance of safeguarding access to unauthorized records. Citizens want to know the truth. Thank you for being a seeker of truth, and thank you for the Board for putting this as an item on the agenda for consideration.
My name is Elaine Wilding, and I am from Orem. And I would just like to really ditto what Carol just said. I have no formal comment to make, except that, as a citizen, it is really important that, we don't even know how to get to the bottom of something like this. So I would just say that I'm grateful to see that, that this has come up as an agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I just wanted to make a few comments. Most of what I had to say, I said in a press release the other day, and I want you to know that the Sheriff's Office has no problem with transparency. I would like to thank a couple of the commissioners who did reach out to me to ask appropriate questions. I find it interesting, as well as disturbing, that the Commission has placed this on a public agenda item. I find it very inappropriate. It is very out of order. Levitt's, this continues Levitt's attempts to intimidate victims and witnesses and people working this case. And by placing this on the agenda, the Commission has participated in that continual intimidation on this case. This is a criminal investigation. There was no reason to place this on public agenda other than to get this. You got your public display very unprofessional. Find it disturbing that Commissioner Sakovich shows more concern with the public display to forward Levitt's agenda than you felt, than the fact that Levitt himself has publicly named himself in a case investigating the sexual abuse and trafficking of multiple victims. What actions are you taking with that?
Unfortunately, as public comment, I can't respond.
Because you're not. We will be transparent. But this, this is inappropriate, Commissioner, and you know it.
Any other comments? Given the high visibility of this in the last seven days, when I first became aware of it Wednesday evening last week, I only got a small piece of it. Took several days to actually get the full interviews. And the, the agenda was written to be extremely broad and not implicate any particular officer or employee. But in, in, as we talked about this and consideration of it, I'd like to motion to alter the language of the current agenda to reflect a little bit of a difference. Basically, to strike the second line, so that the entire thing reads, "Approve and authorize the commencement of an investigation related to the conduct of elected officers of Utah County pursuant to Utah Code Sections 1753, 302, 5, and 11, 1753, 106, 2A, 4, and B, 7, and B, and then 1753, 226, and 1753, 301." So what the attempt is, the orig, the investigation, the scope and all of that will be done in, in the future date, in consultation with legal and other department heads, and keep it away from the investigation that's currently undergoing review and being held. And this will be simply a scope of what happened last week, and why. Do we have a motion? Or comments?
Well, I thought we had agreed not necessarily just last week. We weren't going to put a time restraint.
No, 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 I didn't, I didn't, I didn't intend to put a time for when the investigation will be held, just that I first heard about it a week ago.
So that the, the Agenda Item has been modified. I'll just reiterate to say, approve and authorize the commencement of investigation related to the conduct of elected officers of Utah County with the pursuant codes. Correct?
Mr. Chair, I, I apologize. Paul Jones with the Attorney's Office. And I apologize to jump in the middle of a motion, but I am doubtful that the Commission can amend an Agenda Item on this, on the day of the meeting. And so I hate to interfere with the process here, but, but I don't think the commissioners can actually amend your agenda, or make a motion that's not within the scope of an Agenda Item that was publicly noticed. There's a 24-hour requirement to publicly notice your agenda. And so I, I, I don't think you can do what you're, what you're, what you're doing.
I thought we've done this before, where we've modified an Agenda Item to reflect greater clarity that came after the fact.
I can't think of a example, sitting here at the moment. You know, these, the Agenda Items are, are here to give public notice of what, of what your potential actions could be. And so I, I think that, I think you've got to be really careful about trying to, to amend the Agenda Item at the meeting. Possibly, if it's, I mean, you know, if it's within a reasonable reading of the Agenda Item, and we, you alter it a little bit without changing, you know, the.
And I think we have changed, like, contracts and things, but not necessarily the entire nature of an Agenda Item, is what you're saying.
Right, yeah.
Is that correct?
A minor change that doesn't actually change the, the nature of the thing would probably be fine. But, but making a substantial change that changes the scope of an Agenda Item would not be allowed.
So where's the scope change?
Well, I'm concerned here that you have a pretty specific item here, right? So the item here on Number Eight is to investigate the unauthorized release of documents and other related matters. That's, that's pretty specific. That's what the public was on notice, that, that you might be doing here today. And now, I'm just concerned that now you're broadening that out. Or, you know, this is, you know, this is the first I'm coming to it here, so.
Yeah.
It sounded like now you wanted to say that you wanted to approve and authorize the commencement of an investigation related to, and then it was the, the conduct of county officers?
Elected officials.
Conduct, elected officials of Utah County.
Yeah, that, in my mind, that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a pretty significant expansion.
Looks like you may have been conferring counsel. Why don't you counsel confer for a moment?
It's good to have a good second chair. I would recommend not trying to change the, the language of, of the agenda, but, but what you're doing could be encompassed by the other related matters. So, sounds like you're still, you're still interested in, you know, the potential unauthorized release of documents.
So actually, I think that having that specifically on the agenda was absolutely inappropriate and should have been discussed in closed session, and not put on a public agenda. And so if that language were to stay in, then that completely, like I said, I think it changes the scope. So perhaps we, perhaps we continue, perhaps we continue for one.
Probably not even continue. Maybe what I should do is strike this particular version and do it over again.
Well, if that's the case, then I will make a motion to, well, we can either continue or we could not approve. Which would you prefer?
I'm still battering back and forth, because there's a lot of times that, when it comes onto our, when it comes onto our agenda, that we modify and change the, the Agenda Item on a regular basis. I'm, I'm conflicted by this, that it can't be, you know, that we have to go to a certain level.
Right. Well, sometimes we might, we might modify a document, and that's, so sometimes the Agenda Item will identify the action that you want to take. And the, the, the action might be that we're going to approve a contract, or we're going to do a resolution. Now, the public's on notice that you're going to look at that contract or resolution. It doesn't need to be set in stone. In fact, in fact, you could, you could make drastic changes to the underlying document, right? Like, if you wanted to say that we wanted to, you know, have a contract with a, with a certain company, we could change all the terms of the contract, and yet the public is still on notice that you're going to possibly approve a contract with that company. So, so we often change the underlying documents, and that doesn't impact a, a public notice issue. I don't think we change Agenda Items themselves very often, and, and certainly we shouldn't do that to the extent that we're changing the nature of the Agenda Item, you know, without, without violating our, our public notice.
Here's, here's one of the things, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna tag on what Commissioner Gardner said. Your office looked over this, this Agenda Item. When we look through this Agenda Item, that, that second line, we're in fear of putting the county at risk.
We feel that that's not proper procedure.
And so when we, when we see that on there, we've got to have the ability to say that the county attorney's office, that we don't agree with the way that that was, that was worded. And, and so therefore, we want to change that, not changing the intent, which the intent is to authorize and convince, commence an investigation. But we have no interest on the legal, on the criminal side. We have no interest when it comes to implicating anybody, you know, that's, that works for the county. But our concern is, is that that one line right there is problematic, and I think that it should be fully within our power to say, we need to strike that one line out. Because I think it, coming from your office, it causes problems. It causes problems for all three of us, to a certain extent, I think.
I mean, I think that you could approve the, the motion and make it clear that, that you're approving the motion under the other related matters prong. You know, the other option would have been to have a second item on the agenda that, that you, that you were more in favor of, you know, prior to today. You know, you possibly read that item. If you weren't in favor of it, then, you know, either trying to work channels through my office beforehand to, to, you know, amend that to where it was more appropriate, you know, before it was published, or to, or to have your own Agenda Item on that you were more comfortable with.
Yeah, the way this was written originally, we spent a lot of time with legal counsel to make sure this was not implicating any one person, or a level of, of involvement with the county. It was supposed to be wide open.
So, and I think, I think process matters. Following proper process and proper procedure is incredibly important. The way this came about, we were sitting in a meeting on water usage, and this Agenda Item. item, the wording of it, was written and published without Commissioners Lee or myself having seen it before the public agenda was published. So we had no way of seeing it beforehand, because when it happened, we were sitting in a meeting deciding on how to look at water conservation for the future.
I was with you in that meeting, and it was published after that meeting. It was already on the agenda system. So that's not quite correct to say that you were completely unaware. It was there.
The wording of it, the wording of it was not made available to us prior. So, without the, without the amendment, I fear this is not the proper procedure, and this was not the proper process.
Let me, let me ask a question.
I would have to vote with that.
Is the, is the agenda item, the listing of the agenda item, the, the controlling mechanism when it, when it comes to the application? Or can, can we approve of item number eight and then clarify? Because we have, we have documents underneath this, and we could say within the documents, this is our intent. Can we do that?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely, yeah. The motion was to, the motion was to change the agenda item. And I don't think you can change your agenda item, but I think you can, I think you can approve number eight, and you can clarify that, that, that you're approving it under the other related matters, and you can talk about, if you want to, if you want to clarify that, you certainly can. I don't think you can, I don't think you can change the wording of the agenda item, but I think you can work within this agenda item. And, and, you know, it sounds like you're, it sounds to me like the board is interested in possibly approving this, or at least there was a motion to approve it under the, the other related matters prong of the agenda item. But I don't think you can change it now to say that you're going to, that you want to investigate the elected officers. That's-
So, so Paul, can I?
Because that's the only way we have authority, because the law stated pursuant to Utah Code Sections, the sections stated, give us authority to investigate elected officers.
So Paul, can I, can I make, can I make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 8 with the clarification that we would like to see that we're approving and authorizing the commencement of the investigation related to the, I think it was, what was it, what was the other wording that was in there?
Elected officials of Utah County.
Elected officials of Utah County.
Conduct of, conduct of elected officials of Utah County.
Officials of Utah County pursuant to Utah Code Sections 1753-302, in parentheses, 5 and 11, 1753-106, A, 4, B, 1753-226, and 1753-301.
I think you can do that as long as you, you should probably also clarify that, that you see that as falling within the other related matters on, that's, that's stated on the agenda item, which I think is what.
Yeah.
It's still confusing.
So, as stated within the other related matters, I can make that motion.
Yeah, I think that'd be fine.
Okay, that's my motion.
Read that again.
Sorry, Commissioners, I didn't hear a motion to close the public comment on this. You guys just went into discussion.
We don't, we don't usually close it with a motion.
Can I still make a comment on this? Because I'm, I'm in charge of the criminal investigation on this, and something that you just said in there has got me extremely concerned.
Please, go ahead.
My name's Jason Randall. I'm a lieutenant with sheriff's office. I'm supervising the investigation that Sheriff Smith referred to on the ritualistic child abuse that is going on. I have some extreme concerns, and in the wording of this motion, when you guys talk about documents that could be altered, that need to be looked at, if there are documents that are concerning this criminal investigation, it is completely inappropriate for those to be examined by civilians at this time, documents that are naming perpetrators, documents that are naming victims.
That's not part of this motion.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm making sure of, and that's my concern.
And that's why I would like-
When you guys are talking about documents and whatnot, that is-
That's why I would like-
That's the reason for the clarification.
What already has been released to the public is extremely concerning. And if that's what's being discussed and, and bannered about and looked at, it, it is completely inappropriate for that to be happening. So as long as you're giving the assurances that-
That's not, the criminal side of it is totally separate from this whole thing.
Okay.
We're just trying to find out what happened last week.
Okay, thank you.
So I think what Commissioner Lee was suggesting was to approve and authorize number eight with a focus under the unrelated matters on investigating, the investigation related to the conduct of elected officials of Utah County, and including all the statutory references.
It still sounds like what we just said at the beginning.
And leave the document stuff out of it.
That's similar to what he said, but without amending the agenda item.
Right.
Say, because if it need be, we can strike it and reintroduce it later, but if that works-
I would prefer to do that. Rather than make it so sticky, I would rather strike and reintroduce later.
Okay.
Because I really think it's really important that we follow proper procedure.
Right. But I, but I think just for the purposes of it, we all three agree with-
We've had the discussion.
Had that discussion. We all three agree. I think for cleanup purposes, I don't, I don't see a problem with, if we wanted to strike it.
Yeah, and to strike it.
It's not like it's a time thing, anyway, so.
Right.
But, you know, we, we all, we all three agree basically in, in, in commencing-
Right, and we recognize issues with as written.
Right, right.
So read this motion again, or we're going to strike.
You know what? I will, I'll pull that motion, since we don't, I don't want to have to look for a second or not a second. And, and then, and then we'll make a motion to continue, well, not continue, not continue, because then that whole thing has to come back again.
Right.
To strike this item so that we can, it can be reworded.
I'll second that motion.
And, and to clarify, this, this still commences the investigation, though?
No.
Okay. Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 That passes 3-0. Okay.
Final motion?
Thank you.
I will move to adjourn.
Second.